Good evening, everybody. We have a great group today. And it's a great occasion for us to honor you guys, which we will do in one second. But it's nice to see so many faces in this hall today. So I'd like to call this meeting in order, the Board of Trustees, the Village of Deerfield, April 21st, 2025. Roll call.
Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Goldstone.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Metzchilders is absent. Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If we could all rise, and I would ask the Deerfield High School WarBots to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. The Deerfield High School WarBots and their robot named...
Junkpot.
Junkpot?
Yes.
Is here, they're all here to talk to us about a great achievement that they just did. And that is, they won the first Tech Challenge Illinois tournament at the state level. And it's a really, really cool thing. So why don't we just give a round of applause, and then we can ask these guys to... I think maybe wonder if some of you would like to step up and talk to us a little bit about your group and introduce to us who you are and the video that you have for us.
I'll go first.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Hi, I'm Howard Citron, sponsor for Deerfield Robotics. I just wanted to kind of come and say first, thank you for this wonderful honor for the kids. I've been with this group now, we're almost at four years here. A lot of these kids I had when they were students, as freshmen as well, some of them I have currently. But really just awesome to watch this group of kids who've been building things before I ever met them. And it's the same group, and it was really sort of neat watching this group kind of start together even again before they ever got to DHS, and then continue to work together and build to a really cool accomplishment, to win this championship at the state level. It's the first time, really, it's happened at Deerfield, because I don't even think the other team won the state championship. They got in through another way, and then COVID happened, so they never made it to Worlds. But, and they're just getting back from world championships, which was this week in Houston. So, so yeah, really cool accomplishment. They were in the top 200 or so out of 8,800 teams worldwide. So, really cool.
And my name is Mikey Everts, and I'm the president of Deerfield Robotics. And yeah, I mean, Citron said it really, really well. This team has been just impressive and phenomenal this season. So we as a kind of Deerfield, we've been competing in this challenge for about 15 years. There are three teams that were, that are in our club. This team that is kind of behind me, in front of me today, is the, is the WarBots, and these are the state champions. One of our, Citron just spoke, Mr. Valour couldn't be here tonight, but we also have Mr. Gartley, and these are our wonderful, wonderful sponsors. And they kind of lead us in everything we do as students and support us on this, you know, crazy venture in order to win the state championship. It's, you know, it's been a long season. We've been in-season since September, since Labor Day. And every, every year, there's a new game competition or task. This year it was themed Into the Deep, so it was all about grabbing things out of a submersible with a kind of water theme over the challenge. Each team is about 15 to 20 students. We work three days a week after school, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. And near meets, it's often into the late evening and the weekend, to build the robot, to program it, to run autonomously and under driver control, and assemble engineering notebooks in order to engage with the community, do community outreach, and document the creative and the construction process of these bots. We participate in three league meets, and then the Chicago Suburban Northeast League Tournament. Those are qualifying meets that enable us to get to the state level, and this year to win the state level and actually go to the world championships, which was pretty notable. Other than that, I'll show a quick video in a second of the robot working and doing its magic. But this is kind of, you can see on the screen, kind of little graphics about how the first Tech Challenge works. We work with our mentors to design and build robots in an exciting challenge every season, and it's released every September. And you can see some of the graphics and the logos on the screen. And now I'm going to let one of our team captains, Caleb Spector, talk a little bit about the robot.
Awesome.
Look at that thing. So, it's heavy. We have a sort of heavy robot, one of the heaviest ones out there right now, about 40 pounds. So there's a few main functions to our robot, so this year to do the challenge. Almost every year, there are some sort of linear slides, so these extend out for us to be able to reach out. And our arm actually rotates downwards, so we can reach and grab things off of the floor. So, out here, we can reach down, we have our claw, our claw opens to and close, and then our arm comes back in and rotate upwards to score in the two different scoring zones.
Can you move it over this, with a, with a stick?
Yeah, it's all, we don't have a battery in here right now.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't bring the controllers, but this is all controlled through motors on here, and there's like two computers in there, and they control everything in there.
You guys built that?
Yeah, we built the whole thing. So the mode, like, all we, we get to buy motors, servos, and then some U channels in here, which are like base building blocks, but you can see we actually custom water jet cut our side panels, so this high-pressure water with sands, we custom cut those to fit our needs even better than what the ones you could buy were, and then a majority of the robot is actually 3D printed. So all of the red and black parts that you can see for the most, most part are actually 3D printed. So there's, I think around 80 hours of 3D printing involved in just the completed parts, not to mention all of the iterations that it takes to get the tolerances right.
And it's all submersible, that went underwater?
No, so nothing, it's called the submersible, it's the water, the water-themed challenge. Unfortunately, we were a little upset that there was no water. But it's themed that way, so the robots, we drive around on a field. So we have really cool wheels, actually. You can see they look a little weird, but they allow us to go left and right, as well as forward and backwards.
Right.
And then we have three more small wheels, this one, this one, and this one, which are used for our localization during our autonomous period. They track, by telling how far they've spun, they can tell the robot exactly where it is compared to where it starts, and since you're able to control the starting position of the robot, it knows exactly where it is on the field. And so the first 30 seconds of each match is an autonomous period, and so Mikey, I think, has a video for you guys later. And so the first 30 seconds is all autonomous, so the computer runs a set of pre-coded instructions, and the only thing it's allowed to use is sensor input, and then it gets into two minutes of driver control, where me and Zalan, who is the other driver of our team, pick up two controllers, and we are able to control the robot. So he will do all the arm movements, and I will move the robot around the field, so when you see that. So we actually have two drivers working in tandem to make it work.
Dance.
And so the submersible is just like a little structure on the ground that all of the scoring ones are actually organizing inside of. And so you just grab it out of there, and it creates a barrier to entry, because it has like little two-inch-high walls, so you can't just drive into it, you actually have to have an arm that extends into it. And then you go and score, there are two main ways of scoring, you'll see this a little bit later, too. You can drop off the bricks into a little zone called the observation zone, where you will see a person reach in and put a clip on the, the blocks, and then they can hang them on the wall, and you can pick them up and clip them on a bar. That's worth a little bit more points than the alternative, which you'll see our partner does in the match, which is you pick them up and you just place them in a basket that's about four feet off the ground. So those are the two main ways of scoring. They're worth very similar amounts of points, but they're both very important as you work with one, so all matches are played two-on-two. You and your partner against two other teams, so you win and lose as a team, and then they just like collect how you did as a team to organize rankings. And so like we play, at both state and worlds, we play qualification matches, and then that seeds it, and then you go into playoff matches where you are stuck with one, where you like partner with your one alliance, you're with the same alliance. For the qualification matches, the partnerships are randomized.
And how, how long is a match?
A match is two and a half minutes, so the 30 seconds of autonomous, and then two minutes of driver control.
We are just, I, I'm so in awe of how you guys can do that.
Give you guys a little bit of a voiceover of two while we watch the match.
That might be good.
You can see.
So...
They can see the screen?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be able to see the screen. So this is a picture of just a couple more glamour shots, so to speak. This is a picture of the, this was our team, and then this other team is actually from Carmel Catholic High School in Mundaline. Their team name is Nian Robotics, and this was our robot, this was the winning alliance of the state championship, with all of the state awards in front of it.
Yes, so our robots on the left, robots are identified by their team number, so we are the 10-4-1-5 WarBots.
Yep.
So.
And so this is kind of where I can go into the video, and yeah, Caleb, if you want to talk us through what's happening. It's all very fast, but it's, it's pretty impressive, so this team was pretty phenomenal. You'll, you'll see.
So, yeah, auto, our autonomous period is like super important, because all of the scores in autonomous pretty much double at the start of teleop, so it's worth a lot to have a really good autonomous, which we were able to do very quickly. So, yeah, so our robot is going to be, I think, can you guys see my cursor or no? Okay, so our robot is this one right here, and then our part, this, these were our partners, these were the drivers, we are actually standing back here. And then their robot is right behind them, and then our, the two robots that we are going against are on the left side of the field. So, is there volume to this?
New skills. And finally, we have 5620. Team 8620 Worm Gear Warriors. In the spirit of gracious professionalism, we will be having a good faith handshake between our two alliances, so teams, take it away.
So, yeah, I'm muted for two seconds, but the, yeah, these were, so that was me, that's Andrew Kluge, and that's Zalan, who are here. So this is, this center structure is the submersible, and that's where everything's organized, this is the basket you can score on, and this is the bar that you can score on right here, that you'll see us score on during autonomous, so this first 30 seconds is autonomous.
Two, one, go. Playoff match 10 underway over here on Solomon Robots at work in what could be the final match on this division. We have Alliance 1, wearing red, Alliance 3, wearing six. Robots are neck and neck so far, but let's take a look at WarBots on the red alliance, two of those specimens so far, now three, 30 points so far, but also Titans do the same, they follow it right up, four specimens on both high chambers, let's see if both alliances get five. Remarkable work coming out of Auto.
And then that little bit at the end where we go back into that zone counts as a park, which just gives us a few extra points.
Three, two, one, go. Two minutes of teleoperated play underway now, Alliance 1 in the lead, 183 to 167. Remarkable autonomous on both sides of the field. Titans and WarBots need the charge on the specimens. While Nian and Worm Gear were on samples, taking a look at the high baskets, red alliance advantage, seven samples so far, blue has got five. 10-0-9-1, Nian, they move all the way over to the red alliance, observation zone, grab a neutral sample and bring it on up to the red alliance high basket. We've seen Nian and WarBots work together before, let's take a look over on the blue side of the field, they've got four specimens clipped on to the plain field wall.
And there's a lot of strategy here also, like you can play defense, so you'll see that our robot sort of hits into the pink robot that's next to us, because we can sort of stop them from picking stuff up as quickly, which is very beneficial to us. Because it slows them down without really slowing us down as we just hit them.
It looks like they're still able to navigate scoring these specimens.
Our general strategy was to gather the bricks and dump them off in that zone for the first minute, and then in the second minute, we go and try and score them. So we swipe them all over to give ourselves a very large space to score them, so there's a decent amount of strategy involved, but...
Worm Gear drops off another eight points, Nian does the same.
Her commentary is great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then you'll see that there's going to be a little buzzer in three seconds that signals the last 30 seconds of the match.
Nian reaches up, 30 seconds left.
And in the last 30 seconds of the match, there is a special thing that you can do. You can, from the sidebars, you might be able to barely make out that there is red tape on this bar right here and right here.
It does look like they are in that red alliance ascent zone, though, as we approach the conclusion.
If you can hang your robot from that bar or the bar just underneath it, you're going to get quite a few extra points.
Final 10 seconds coming up, contact on the red ascent zone is WarBots, followed by Nian, Worm Gear, followed by Titans. As we end, playoff match 10 on Solomon.
So, that's it, and then the, once the buzzer ends, the match is over, and we depower the robots, and then they generally fall down.
We have got an Illinois record coming up in playoff match 10 on Solomon.
This is the reveal to see who won, and we were on the red alliance, and we won, and we actually set, I think this was the world record at the time. This was tied for the world record at the time, so...
A score of 415 to 292.
We, we absolutely congratulate you guys, it's so inspiring to see what you've done, and to know that you're on to bigger things, and the next competition, and, and next challenges. We want to acknowledge you as a team, but I'd like each of you to please stand up and introduce yourselves, so we know who's here tonight, and we can acknowledge you individually. So, yeah, so please come up to the mic one at a time and just introduce yourselves.
I guess I'll go first.
Yes, please, you're on the roll.
You might know me, but I am Caleb Spector, I am one of the team captains here, and I am a driver for our team.
And what year are you?
Oh, I'm a senior.
What are you going to do next year?
Uh, next year, I am studying mechanical engineering at Carnegie Mellon.
Good for you.
I'm Max Feinberg, I'm a senior at Deerfield High School, and I'm vice president of Outreach and Operations, and I'm going to be studying finance at the University of Pennsylvania.
All right.
I'm Josh Doobie, I'm a senior at Deerfield High School, I've been on the team for four years, and next year I'm studying economics at Duke.
All right.
I'm Kevin Zoo, I'm a freshman at Deerfield High School, and next year I'll be a sophomore.
All right.
Hi, I'm Nico Weisberger, I'm a senior at Deerfield High School, and I'm undecided for next year.
I'm Talia Helfan, I'm a senior, and next year I'll be at, studying microbiology at the University of Wake Forest.
All right.
Hi, I'm Andrew Kluge, I'm a senior, I'm one of the captains, and I'm also the drive coach for the team, and I'm undecided what I'll be doing next year.
My name's Mikey Everts, I'm the president of operations at the Deerfield Robotics Club, and next year I will be studying computing exploration at the Rochester Institute of Technology.
All right.
I'm Lila Peck, I'm a senior, and next year I'm going to be studying business at Vanderbilt University.
I'm Olivia Fizz, I'm a senior, and next year I'm going to be studying finance at the University of Pennsylvania as well.
All right.
I'm Maya Crane, I'm a senior, and I'll be studying psychology at Northeastern University next year.
My name is Maxwell Leidner, and I'm a freshman, and next year I'll be a sophomore like Kevin.
And I'm Zalan Georgi, I'm also a senior, I'm one of the team captains and one of the drivers. Next year I'm going to be studying mechanical engineering at the University of Illinois.
Teachers, coaches, participants, students, thank you so much for bringing this to us. Again, we're so proud, our future is so bright because of you, and you're inspiring. Thank you and good luck. Yeah.
Do we get a sign?
Back here. Oh, we got even, we don't have a robot, but we do have.
You know the coolest thing? It's like they had...
All right, everyone, gather around, me, we'll take a picture. We placed this sign at the entrances of our, our village, but this one goes home with someone who will want to.
Give it to the robot.
Yeah. Thank you so much for the meeting.
Thank you.
I'm glad they got a couple of freshmen to come back. The best part is, it looked like they had a...
I love that. What was the one that lasted last week?
Model UN?
Model UN.
Yeah, yeah.
At least folks.
Right, right. And you know, you got another model UN coming.
Well, Model UN, it's a dynasty in this.
There's about 13, 14 years in a row, something like that, I can't keep track.
But this looked like more fun than all that other stuff, you know?
Everybody has their own fun, marriage.
Right, okay.
Fun comes in different places.
Okay.
Just being that guy. It's awesome, it's awesome, it's awesome. Are you kidding?
They're going to have to recruit some new kids, though.
Yeah.
You know, that's a lot of seniors leaving.
Yep.
Yeah.
They might have rebuilding your house.
Well, those other kids aren't there. You know, it was fascinating to me, one of the spots is the orchestra. They got a physics instructor and an orchestra professor, you know, math and music.
Those are so like, so linked.
I know, I know.
All right, on to the more mundane part of our meeting. The next item in our agenda is a proclamation for Arbor Day, I'm going to read it, and then Bob, if I could present it to you. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in the village increase property values, enhance the village vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Mayor Daniel C. Shapiro, on behalf of the Village of Deerfield, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the Village of Deerfield, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Proclaim this 21st day of April 2025, do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proclamation approved, Bob.
And in honor of Arbor Day, we're doing a tree planting at Kipling School this Thursday in the morning, so Dan, Public Works, and Superintendent Simic are going to be at Kipling School doing a cool tree planting, so we're super excited about that.
Nice.
We have a couple of appointments. I'd like to now offer the appointment of Kathy Weaver to the Fine Arts Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to offer the appointment of Linda Copeland to the Voluntary Engagement Commission, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Minutes of the prior meeting of April 7th, 2023, regular board meeting minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Bills and payroll. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now's the time where we offer the public an opportunity to make a comment on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Moving on to reports, we have no consent agenda, no old business, new business. Item 2528, a resolution ratifying the purchase of a vehicle from Highland Park Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to ongoing supply chain disruptions and manufacturing delays, Village Manager Street approved the purchase of a Ford Escape plug-in hybrid for $37,260 from Highland Park Ford. This would be the village's third plug-in Escape, it matches the two others that we purchased over the past two years, and it has a combined fuel efficiency rating of 101 miles per gallon. It does appear that the overall vehicle shortage, at least with these commercial vehicles, is getting better, but we're still having a difficult time, so that's why we took this action. This would, and again, it's just part of the village's initiative to have 16 electric and hybrid vehicles by 2030, and notably, it is the, we're replacing the last non-hybrid or electric vehicle between admin and community development, so at this point, going forward, everything is at least, everything's a plug-in vehicle.
How many do we have now?
We have, this would be the eighth vehicle.
So we're halfway home?
We're halfway there. Yes, sir. Without any questions.
And again, you, you look at the, the energy costs for these vehicles is like one-fourth per month.
Yes, absolutely.
So it's a significant savings at the end, at the end of the day, but again, thank you to the board for granting me the authority to do this when we need it, because supply chains are still just super challenged, and thanks to staff for keeping their eyes out for appropriate vehicles for us.
You said it's loosening up a little bit?
It is getting a little better, I think just demand for vehicles is slowly starting to decrease at this point, so it's a little bit easier than it has been to find vehicles. That's not the case with Public Works, which is, you know, those, you know, larger commercial vehicles, they still don't make fleet-level models anymore, you know, we are purchasing the lowest, the entry model, which used to be a mid-tier model nowadays, so we're still having the issues, again, they just simply don't make those low-end models, but we're doing what we can to be as cost-effective as possible.
But this is the right kind of vehicle for the job that we're doing with it, so...
Being the first, you know, the first 40 miles are electric, which again is more than the typical inspector's driving every day, so on all intents purposes, it essentially is an electric vehicle.
Questions?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Resolution reallocating 2025 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove. David?
Good evening. Lake County Partners has been asking Home World Communities and the county to pool their bonding authority at Buffalo Grove to be used on regional projects. Since its inception, the Lake County Private Activity Bond Clearing House has funded nearly $200 million in local projects, which has resulted in the construction of over 360,000 square feet of new manufacturing space, the creation of 648 new manufacturing jobs, the renovation of 1,600 multifamily dwelling units, and the purchase of an estimated 251 homes by first-time home buyers. We recommend approval.
We've been doing this, I'm going to say for 15 years at least, and again, if we, if we have a project that we think might qualify for this, we wouldn't encourage approval, but we don't, but, and, and you know this, I've had a project in my past in Lake Bluff where we actually did this, but it has to be very specific that makes sense for you, but this is really cool for the county to pool these resources in support of regional development.
You know, and to my recollection, when we have reallocated the volume cap, it seems like we always reallocated to Buffalo Grove.
Buffalo Grove has, through intergovernmental agreement, has agreed to be the, the clearinghouse.
That's what I thought.
So it's kind of like...
Oh, Buffalo Grove and then Nekas first?
So, so we, so we've all agreed, and they'll do it according to these, these conditions to do that, so it's like us, if we were to do something for the region...
Right, but all the development is not happening in Buffalo Grove.
No, no, no.
Just to clarify.
It's there the financial mechanism to do that for the, for Lake County as a group.
Right.
Got it.
Which we thank them for that, for doing that.
Thank you for clarifying that, that's helpful.
It's very efficient.
Questions?
What kind of, what kind of projects have we?
So these are, these are, these are private activity bonds for things, as David mentioned, housing projects. There's a Montessori school. Things that, that benefit the community that aren't just commercial projects. So it's good stuff that happens, but we also then, so what happens is essentially they get our bond rate to do those projects for financing.
I see.
So it gives them a discount to actually accomplish those projects. That, that's the value of it for the developer.
And because it's a cooperative, if we had a project, we'd get the same benefit.
And have we taken advantage of that?
We have not. We have not had a project, nor have we been approached by a developer to ask us for this.
I see.
But if, if, if we did, which that was my experience in Lake Bluff before, then I'd say let's just use it for us and not, not extend this to others. But this has been really beneficial to Lake County as a whole and a part of our regional cooperation with Lake County.
I see. Thank you.
You got a motion and a second.
I would move approval.
Second. Roll call.
Yes. Trusty Benton?
Yes.
Trusty Berg?
Yes.
Trusty Goldstone?
Yes.
Trusty Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Items for discussion by mayor and board. As Kent mentioned a couple of minutes ago, we have an Arbor Day tree planting on the 24th of this week, of this month at 9:00 AM at Kipling. I've done it for a couple of years and it's always so much fun to see the kids. Mike Simic's there, usually the principal of the school is there and it's always fun to see the kids kind of get involved with the tree planting. Our next committee of a whole meeting is on the 21st. We had ours, our second one last week and I thought it was excellent. A lot of good discussion, a lot of real juicy issues that we're dealing with and that we're going to advance. And I thought it was very, very good. So we'll continue those discussions on the 21st of this month at 7 o'clock here. I don't have anything else. Do you have anything?
Just a couple of things. We've got three weeks between meetings. So our next village board meeting is the 5th of May. So just enjoy the extra week off. Just know that we're going to bring you extra work because there's always a penalty for an extra week off. But Bob Phillips, I wanted to ask you to talk about, we had a water main break between Illinois and Cherry Court underneath the creek. That's a little bit weird. We don't, we, we need to come back to you with numbers that we know them, but we got probably, you know, maybe a hundred thousand dollars or less in expenses to fix that water main break that goes under the creek. So we got to, you know, bore and do all that stuff.
Trying to bring up a picture so we can show everybody where it's at. There we go. Okay, so like Kent mentioned, on Wednesday of last week, we had a water main break and, and this is the location where that water main break occurred. So it's Illinois Trail on the south leg and Cherry Street on the north leg, if you can see it on the map. And if I zoom out, you can see kind of a larger picture. Hazel Avenue is, is here east-west, Wilmot Road north-south. And so the water main, as you can see, it, it pushes through there and that's called a water main loop. So it, it goes from one area, it's connecting up one section of, of the system to the other. And then basically it helps us create better water circulation, water quality, water pressure in the system. We have a number of crossings that, that go under creeks. This would be the third time that I've been working here that we've had a water main break beneath the creek where we had to deal with issues like this. So in order to repair this water main break, or, or I would say replace the water main, the water main needs to be pushed under the creek. We can't open cut or dig through the creek. We have to directionally drill. And so we, we would set up a bore pit roughly in this location, right around where the trail, where it says trail there, and then push underneath the creek to roughly around this location. And then reconnect up to the existing water main. Right now we have a price to, to do just a directional drilling. Doesn't include material or manpower. That's about $30,000. We're working on getting a second price for that, but this probably should be taken care of in short order. You know, just to, just to keep, keep the system flowing the way that it normally would.
So do we temporarily patch this while we're waiting to get it thoroughly repaired?
So what we did is, is we did, we did cap, cut and cap the water main in this area. I'm trying to zoom in a little bit. So we did cut and cap the water main right in this, in this spot here. And then we have a valve here that we shut. And so we, we essentially have two dead ends on the system right there. Nobody is out of water.
It's not affecting residents.
The fire hydrants are still operating. Everything is still operating fine. If it weren't, we probably would have done it under an emergency basis. But we have a little bit of time to plan. So we're going to plan. We'll just bring it back to the village board and, and we'll, we'll keep you posted on it.
Is it an old water main?
1960s.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, you know, and then the obvious question too is, is, you know, do we know the cause of the water main break? Obviously there's, there's a lot of things going on in the water system in that area right now. We have construction on Hazel Avenue, start, stop on the water system. We're turning things off, turning things on. Causes the system to have, you know, like, we call it like a water hammer, like where you, you send a slug of water down the system and it causes the, the pipe to shake. You probably experienced that in your home sometimes. And so it's very similar to that. But when a water main is old like that and you have a water hammer, it just, it'll, it'll cause a break. But at least this time, we noticed that the water main broke underneath the creek. And so, you know, we, we saw, somebody notified us. They saw water coming up. But, you know, in the past, we, we lost a million gallons of water not too far from here, right on Hazel Avenue. Just to south of here, right in this area where this, where the creek crosses, or where Hazel crosses the creek, probably about 10 years ago. We didn't know it was broken and it was just spewing. And so, you know, we found out that it was. We didn't, we did not correct the crossing. We didn't replace the crossing, but we did some, some quick engineering there and kind of, kind of made things work out just, just right for us. But anyways, that's the plan. The plan is to, you know, sometime in the next, say two to four weeks, come back to the village board. We'll have a little more information. We'll be able to, to get pricing and everything to you. And it could be before, it could be after the fact. Most likely, we'll, we'll be able to get in front of you before we do the, the major repair.
Is there any investigation needs to do going either direction, just to see if there's any damage or, or any, any loss to the integrity of the nearby water main?
We will be looking into that. We haven't really started down that road yet since it's kind of early. We're just getting pricing and everything together right now. But the question is where do we, how far do we take it?
Right.
And, and, you know, it looks like maybe all the way down to Hazel, maybe not as far as, as Greenwood, but in the north, maybe to, to, maybe to Somerset. So.
And Bob, I think part of this is when you start messing with stuff like we are with Hazel, it causes other things to be, other weaknesses to be exposed.
Right.
And it's, it's part and parcel to what happens, but that's also why you got to stay ahead of it. And I plead, I applaud the team for jumping on it and figuring it out. And again, no, no residents are not, are without water at this point, but it's not the optimal situation because you want the water to be flowing to those. You don't want dead end stuff because dead end stuff is not good. And that's what we want to get back to.
The main reason why we do hydrant flushing every year and we do gap filling on our.
Which we're doing right now.
Right. We do, we do gap filling to, to fill the gaps where we have dead ends in our water mains. New construction, water main is, no dead ends are allowed. So yeah, so we, we painstakingly go through this to make sure that that, this doesn't occur.
So hopefully we come back to you at the next board meeting with the final thing, but you know, we got to get people to respond, all that kind of thing. In the meantime, know that everybody's safe, the water's safe, but we're going to keep pressing for the final solution too. Bob, thanks to you and your team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I did not mention one thing that I meant to mention under my report. May 8th, Elrod Freeman's biannual? Biannual presentation is coming up downtown at 11 o'clock on the 8th at, remind me again where?
Maggianos.
At Maggianos. And I think some of you may have replied. If you haven't, please do so. And do you have anything else?
No, sir.
All right. So at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant, I'm sorry, trustee comments. Did anyone want to say anything? Okay. Pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C5 and 5 ILCS 120/2C11.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Trusty Benton?
Yes.
Trusty Berg?
Yes.
Trusty Goldstone?
Yes.
Trusty Jacoby?
Yes.
Trusty Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.